Everybody, thank you. Welcome to the Town Council Paper Town Council Meeting on Monday, the twenty fourth of November, twenty twenty five. First item agenda, before the apologies to absence is to elect a... Sorry. First item, before the first item agenda. I have three districts. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Town Council on where possible, live streaming on YouTube. Please note that the recording device is sensitive and the live stream may be recorded by third parties. So do not say anything you do not want recorded. If necessary, I will direct all recording in the room and the live stream to be stopped. But generally, I want to avoid doing that. So we would normally record everything except any live parts and sessions. Members of the public may also make their own recordings but must follow our rules for doing so, including stopping recording when requested. Whilst we do not accept anonymous speaking at public forum, members of the public who wish to speak but do not want their name published must please in pay this appeal or say your piece. Thank you. That's what I was saying. Unfortunately, Mayor Cox is not available tonight. He's unavailable. And the Deputy Mayor Laura Jones unfortunately may have to shut off. So rather than disrupt the meeting, it's been agreed that if you are all in agreement that somebody else will stand in as the Chair for this meeting tonight. So we need a proponent. Councillor Jones?
Can I propose David Smith to chair the meeting, please?
Give me a second. Councillor to chair. What was your final? Thank you very much. The relevant items among the agenda then is the apologies for absence.
A Chair with apologies from Councillor Luke Reilly, Councillor Cox and Councillor Liz Smith.
Very much. Item two is the declaration of interests and request for dispensations. As is in the addenda paper, are there any explorations to be made? I don't know then. Thank you very much. Item three is the minutes of the meetings of the Town Council held on Monday, the twenty seventh of October, twenty twenty five, to confirm may our extra record, which will be on the screen very shortly. Just brilliant. Yeah, so under the proposal, they are exempted from record. Councillor Martin, set in the bio. Councillor Jones, Lloyd Bever. That's agreed. Thank you. Item four then is to note the progress of any actions arising from the minutes not covered by this agenda.
Chair, I'm going to continue once.
Yes, thank you.
So yeah, I have listened to Nick Telfey and he is joining a meeting with councillors and the East of England Advocates Trust on Friday. And there has been correspondence regarding the County Council of Construction E. I believe the councillor Mason is going to speak about the Town Council. I don't know whether councillor Fergus has anything else to say about the meeting regarding Haverhill Market?
Where's that gone?
I don't know whether it happened yet. You said you were...
No, it's empty. No, it's empty. Your poll's got to be put in. We need one next. West of me, I understand. But nothing come back at all, yeah?
Chair, the next one was just for everyone to know they should check their history of interest. But that's a private matter for individual councillors. Yeah, and the staff recruitment has started for Health and Wellbeing Hub. We had a good number of applicants and we shall listen to this afternoon's interviews on Friday. A complete assumption.
Thank you very much. Moving on to question. Anybody got any questions at all on that?
Chair, where's the police report? We will say Mr Thompson here for one of the items. Whether you wanted the police report and then the grant, I think that...
Okay, we really have two police reports on here. Okay, so five is the ultimately district councillors initiative going to Haverhill and public forums. So five, hey, is the police report. And we have started with Inspector Matt Craig Paisley and John French, who's the modern's paper advisor. He's reported on the raids on the shops in Haverhill. So gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having us and apologies because I've been here close to two months and if not, I have not achieved to meet you all. It's a return as behaviour. I think this one will be a lot longer than my previous one. It was some contagious for health, but I'm healthy and fit now. So the... I called John along because he is the mastermind of our part and linking to the operation that targeted some of the premises across Haverhill. The first point I'd like to make on it, John is modern slavery is our advisor for the force in the county. And the clue is really in the name, it's modern slavery. So the word raids gives a slight skewed view on this. The primary objective of this operation is to identify victims of slavery, those being coerced into activities against their will, underpaid, poor living conditions. And then identifying the people who are putting those individuals into work who may or may not be part of larger criminal organised groups. This was for Haverhill operations, has gained a lot of traction. We have the Minister visit, we have members of the press, we have Sky, we have The Telegraph. It's not one off. This is just one of the number of operations that we've conducted across the county. And they will be repeated in future as well, providing John hasn't burnt himself out from this one. It was highly successful, but its success has been mainly, of course, due to the intelligence provided by members of the community. And it just demonstrates and underpins the importance of community collaboration in everything that we do in the modern day policing. And my community policing team in Haverhill, the whole ethos of their work is to be visible, is to be engaged in the community, is to build that intelligence all the time, considering the threat harm risk to those most vulnerable in our communities. Often this type of operation can get almost a negative press because when people identify the premises or we identify the premises, they start looking at those premises in a different way. And perhaps think that there's something more of this going on than what there may be. The important thing to note is that working with our partners, and it's not a police responsible, it certainly falls on our partners, but working with our partners, any premises in this town or in the other town that's operating illegally will be tackled. So it's not just tackling what we find on the day, whether that be people enslaved into practices that are against their human rights, or illicit tobacco, or counterfeit products, or alcohol that poses significant health and safety risk. It goes beyond that. It's also looking at who owns the premises, who's renting the premises, who's paying the bills, what legality have they got to be in the country? What are their wider connections across the country? Are we looking at something more organised? Are we looking at something more local? So all of these operations are multifaceted. On one hand, you're looking at safeguarding those that we interact with, obviously protecting the public and making sure that communication with the public is identifying that there is no greater cause for concern. And then it's going up each layer, which is why we had the National Crime Agency with us as well in support, because then they can first hand see what sort of activity we're involved in. But also being really clear with the people we interact with on the days and the operations and the visits and the public, that this is all collaborative. It has to be collaborative, as with everything modern day policing, you can't do it on your own. Partners and stakeholders are crucial importance to the success of those. And as we found on the day, not only was the public really receptive, they continue to be receptive through the press reporting, all the communications coming through Suffolk Constabulary have been really supportive. But also it's helping educate in what the bigger issues are. And hopefully it's swaying a potential ill-informed view of immigration, immigration status away and actually understanding the deeper rooted problems around slavery and exploitation of humans at the end of the day. So if there's any questions on the operations specifically about the results, John is here, but happy to take in questions.
Thank you. So Councillor Brown.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. What would surprise the residents is that some of those premises, seeing that what you found the other day is still open. And it isn't the first time that criminality has been identified at some of those premises. So, yeah, okay, it's on to the, you see The Telegraph and that. To the residents, they'll be walking past some shops. Hang on a minute. Why are they still open?
Yeah, so there's a number of ways that we can, or there's not a number. There's two ways we, as an agency, can influence closure of the premises. I have authority to close premises for hours. My superintendent can extend it to fourteen hours and we can take the premises to court and look at them longer. That's any premises, for any reason, whether it's residential or business part. That has to be measured against a high level of threat risk and harm. But in instances like this, we also look at what's most appropriate and who the lead agency is. We're not the lead agency to look at rent payers, people who have got leases on shops and businesses. And whether they're trading legitimately, that falls away from that. There is work ongoing. It takes time, unfortunately. It takes money. So the authorities involved in taking those cases forward. Again, have a large portfolio to balance the needs and consider whereas the money less invested in looking at closed operations down completely. It doesn't mean they drop off our radar. We continue assess the intelligence coming through. And if I deem it to be a significant level of threat risk and harm, then I would quite happily issue a notice for the closure of premises for ten hours.
I think the other things are others work. So it's, Haverhill was an interesting location in terms of we had quite a bit of intel around both legal working and people living on premises. Now, for us, that's a real risk to the individual because quite often exploits people living in premises that don't have proper safety regulations, for example, fire escapes, that sort of thing. So we found three locations in Haverhill. Obviously, I'm not going to go into details where those locations were. Two of those locations, actually three of them, all three of those locations have now been further visited by fire services and the local authority has enforcement teams. One of those premises has a prohibition notice issued. So basically, if they do have people living on those premises, they're actually breaking the law. So we can pursue that. Two of the other premises have taken measures to ensure that the areas concerned for us in terms of the accommodation have actually now been sealed off. So they can't be used for accommodation. We would, of course, be checking out ourselves later on. So just because the prohibition notice has been issued and measures have been taken, doesn't mean we walk away and stop. We will be doing further checks. One location was found to have an illegal worker involved. We think that location may be involved in other things as well. I understand from our colleagues at Immigration, they're in the process of pursuing a civil penalty referral notice. That's a fine of up to sixty five thousand pounds per person found. Now, for me, that's quite a useful tool in terms of responding to illegal working and responding to exploitation. And it's something we pursue across the county. Across the county so far in this period of operations, I think we've had nine civil penalty referral notices. So for us, it's a major success. But also it really does highlight the importance of local communities coming forward assisting with that result because we will.
Do you want to come back on that?
Of course.
Yeah, so those civil penalty notices, are they against an individual or are they against a business?
They're against the business.
Yeah, so that's the problem there.
And the interesting thing is, it's against the actual directors as well. So they will pursue that. They will pursue that, I know. It goes down to, so if you saw us when we were out and about, we had the immigration enforcement team with us, they issued a civil penalty referral notice. But it's actually their version of CID that pursued that separately. And they are quite vigorous in pursuing that.
Thank you. Councillor Jones?
Yeah, I have concerns about the vulnerable victims. You know, when they're found in these living conditions and obviously you're ensuring that they're no longer living there, I'm just wondering about the level of support that they're then receiving, you know? Is it a case of you check their immigration status and if that's all right, are they just left to get on with it? Or because I'm just wondering, you know, are these people who are then being made homeless, is their follow-up, you know, are they being sort of, you know, taken care of in any way once they've been removed from this situation?
So it really depends on the circumstances which we find. Quite often, a victim of modern slavery won't associate themselves as a victim. We can only really give them the support as a victim if they come forward and want to work with us. That's part of the thing called the national referral mechanism. And it's a process of support that will be offered. But the person who's been offered the support needs to want that support. That said, if we do identify victims and they don't come forward or they don't want our support, we can still do what's called a duty to refer. So it's a duty to referral mechanism, which again, that's intel going on to the system about that person. So if that person does come forward, then other police forces or other agencies might have access to that information. We also, if we're looking at people who are being exploited or living in poor conditions, we will give them other information as well. So it's not a case of, okay, you don't want our help, we're going to walk away. It's ensuring that should they require help, should they feel able to reach out, then they've got the information at hand. A lot of these people have had horrible experiences in the police forces. They've come from countries where police forces have exploited them. They've done incredibly horrible things to them. So why should they trust us? Why should we be indifferent? So for us, it's very important that we go into these locations in a very gentle, approachable way, give them the information should they want to reach us. But also on Haverhill Day, in fact, every single day we've done, we have what's called victim liaison officers. So these are officers who are specially trained in supporting victims. And we did encounter one particular gentleman who I was very concerned about. So a victim liaison officer was immediately pushed in that sort of getting direction to ensure that he's getting the support he needs. So he was a family asylum seeker. He was in a very vulnerable position. So for us, it's about safety.
Councillor Burns?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. Welcome back, as I said. Thank you. In fact, nine years ago, I was working with Trading Standards and Police and I'm on different premises here in Haverhill and they were working really well together. So I'm really pleased now that the other entity at the time, which was St Edmund's People's House Council, who I don't remember Trading Standards at the time saying they were not very cooperative and now Stand Like That doing a lot of work. Obviously, this is ongoing action all the time. Are you also looking at the non-obvious places? You know what I mean by that? Non-famous shops, non-tobacco markets, as usual, was being in the press. Are you looking at other businesses that perhaps have been reported?
We're looking at other businesses. We're also looking at where we've got intel around unlawful HMOs, or HMOs not operating as they should. We also consider those as well. In fact, the Haverhill operation included an HMO that we're concerned about, which is why we also had the local authority housing enforcement officers for that time.
It's really important as well to impress it. Our intelligence system, every piece of intelligence that we see connected to the premises, it branches out. So we look at what we know about the premises, what we know about people involved. Are they connected to other businesses? Have they been linked to other businesses nationally or outside of Suffolk? And so we don't pigeonhole. In fact, there's intelligence on this operation around the business that didn't fit the usual kind of demographic you can like. And it's really indicative to help us understand what broader criminality is linked to it as well as the slavery element, as well as the illicit tobacco and everything else.
Okay, Councillor to chair.
Thank you. I was just interested, who made the decision to invite the press along and what was the purpose?
So that was actually because the funding for the operations is primarily from the NCA. That's very much the NCA deciding. They were kind of calling the shots in relation to press. So we actually had the press at various locations throughout Suffolk, but they all came and followed the NCA.
Any press activity that we have for any police operation goes through our corporate communications department. And there are very stringent guidelines around what they can and can't report on. Some things are embargoed for a period of time. Some things they can't report on at all. They have to sign disclosure forms. They have to sign health care forms. So the fact of this one, because only two weeks before, we had an operation in Suffolk, a really successful operation in Suffolk. We obviously have Suffolk and Haverhill. We had no press. We had no minister. We had no NCA. Very low key, very low level reporting on it. But it was as successful. And often on CNBC, we have a minister involved. They like to then ramp up the national picture on it to get a next attraction.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that the tonality around it didn't align with being gentle and approachable. It was all about a raid and, you know, many of the articles sounded like, you know, the stories you hear about ICE agents in the US. And I think if you're looking to win friends in different communities to give you the intelligence to help vulnerable people, that language is the language that will make a community to come into there again and not want to share.
Yeah, agree. And we were only talking on the way here about the term raid and how we don't use, we might use it in drugs factory or something similar, but we wouldn't use the term raid because of Carrazza's connotations. And actually, in the briefing, reminding every police officer and every agency that was present in that briefing, this focus has to be on vulnerability of individuals in these premises. Because like John's explained, if you can't, if when you walk into a premises, if their instant reaction to any uniform is to run, hide, not engage, become aggressive, then we found strap raid. So how do we, we have to understand where they're coming from and work with... And often that takes time. And it's about building relationships as well. So I've completely taken board with that point.
Councillor?
Just wondering how many of the slavery victims have come forward? I think they disappeared at night after...
In terms of the Haverhill operation?
Yeah.
So in the Haverhill operation, we didn't actually identify any victims of slavery. What we've actually identified is working conditions where we think victims of slavery could be killed. So for us, that's further investigation.
Right, understood.
Elsewhere, over a six year period, I've seen awful lot of slaves. I've previously seen, I've encountered victims of slavery in Haverhill as well.
I did ask how many had come forwards for Haverhill.
For Haverhill, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm pleased to hear that you're saying it was concentrating on the human trafficking side, human slavery. But obviously, that's not how it comes across, as people have said. It does sort of reflect sometimes negatively on the town. But we do a lot of things in town to try and build it up. It has a bad reputation at the end. It doesn't take a lot of time to just come tumbling down again. So it's a shame that, you know, we understand the need for you to do it. But it's a shame that the popular perception is a negative thing, isn't it? Any other questions at all?
Give up good work?
Yeah, think about that. You can't say winter for asking the least, obviously you'll be tipping people off. But do you think that, you know, obviously you said you were right here. You did not write. You have an operation in Newmarket. Do you think that sort of might affect people in our town on guard? If they're like to sort of, oh, they're going to come to us next?
I think the important thing to say, as a western area, we're at management level really close. So I may read with the other inspectors, the chief inspector, the superintendent. And one of the key features of those meetings is to discuss common crime problems, trends. Maybe you've got a problem in Newmarket that's recent as well in Suffolk. How can we work together? How can we learn from you? Maybe something's happening in Haverhill that we think might go to Bury help. So there's always sharing of information. But everything that you do is a balance of how we utilise the resources that we have, what's the threat risk and harm, what's the intelligence picture? At the moment, touch wood, Haverhill was actually a really solid place. When I look at what I have over in Suffolk, I have some fairly significant entrenched problems that we're untangling, getting to the bottom of. Bury's got something similar. Newmarket has. Stone Market has got its own issue. So we're kind of a little bit of an L liar at the moment. Everything looks really nice to me. It's a very bland town, but I'm not overly concerned by the level of criminality that's taking place in the town. I've got no major crime trends. I've got no significant individuals that are really causing us harm. In fact, our priority remains street and the homeless drinking. So that as an indication, if I told you that in Suffolk, my priority is resolved around the significant class A drug supply. And it's organised drug supply that probably gives you a bit of a flavour where we're at in terms of levels of harm and risk in Haverhill.
I think the same can do with accessibility. I mean, it's got railway stations in Suffolk. Not much of a railway station, but is it, do you make it easier for...
No, so that doesn't play a part in Suffolk. Because I think what, there's a number of factors that play into it. I think Suffolk should do, so under the nature of leasing guarantee, the government has injected extra funding into policing. And but it's done on hotspot areas. So they've looked at all the data that's supplied by us and they identify where they feel extra resource needs to be. And they also go further than that, identify what they describe as hotspots. We've got hotspots in Haverhill. Some of that money goes towards policing. An overtime budget allows extra officers to come into Haverhill. But if you look at Suffolk, they've uplifted Suffolk by four community police officers. So my team in Suffolk is now four bigger than what is at Haverhill. I'm not getting any extra from Haverhill this time. That's because the data doesn't support it. I'd like the flexibility to move them around. I'm not allowed because the government are really abus around it. But again, it is indicative of the level of criminality that we're recording. And there's, there are those factors. But as I keep telling my bosses, I've been to High Point twice in the last two weeks to look at the expansion and talk through the security manager around what that looks like. That will come with an added level of demand locally because the individuals are coming for visits because of what they bring with them, criminality of trying to get products into the prison, whether by drones, throwing over the station. So it's, I'm acutely aware that we don't rest on our laurels. We've been really proactive. We speak to our local communities. We speak with our stakeholders. We learn from them and we listen to them. And that's the key. Because you would all probably see rising trends before we might be in terms of crime data statistics.
I think the early data officers, as far as Haverhill is supposed to, a small town like Suffolk is a viewpoint which we talk about regularly. But as you say, if you haven't got the issues, then you're not one of the resources. Councillor?
I'll step aside then, something I've mentioned to Major Keaton and Tim Paul more is, could we not just separate Facebook paid out so we don't want to relate it to Suffolk?
It's funny, I lost that. So the last two years, I've been working with the chief of...
I hear you're asking.
Yeah, and I'm aware because I come in the end of Danny Cooper and then... And it's been, ever since we combined Suffolk and Haverhill, it's, you know, I spoke to a senior officer not that long ago, I hadn't been in Suffolk that long, and I assumed Suffolk and Haverhill were a couple of miles apart. And it's just, until they actually drive around, they don't fully understand the differences.
It's not even Haverhill and Suffolk. It's Suffolk and Haverhill.
Yeah. And it's, yeah, and why it's that, I don't know. I mean, I'm a bit old school in it because in my day, it was Suffolk and Hadley. And I pleased that area for a long time as a police agent. It's a conversation that will continue going on. We've got a change in local parliament and local government. Next year, we will have the loss of the PCC and the structure of the mayor with enough of policing, fire and health. So it'd be interesting times to see if and what is going to likely exploit. But I'm passionate about both sides that I have to police and both carry their own interests. Interest, is it?
I can't answer that.
Yes, but so the point I make is that they're not, for me and the officers that I support and supervise, they're two very separate entities. And what I would say is having worked at most stations in Suffolk, Lowestoft and Hayley Hill, have the officers that work there are really entrenched about what's going on locally there, they feel really passionate, more so than Ipswich, more so than Berry. And it's no slight on those areas, it's just, I think because they feel that little bit of a weight within the business, they feel that added vulnerability to the area.
I think you might have noticed, if I was over there any other week, feeling PCC and yeah, monitoring somewhere there, it's very passionate.
Yes, yeah.
Any more question, okay, Councilor? Is there anything you want to add to what sort of you said towards the end?
There was one thing I could have, actually. It was earlier when you asked a question about the media. So there was, it was all N C A driven apart from one, and that was the Hayley area. So the Hayley area, I was talking to a local police officer, and clearly very passionate. So I said, okay, well, I'll come along and you can interview me second. So I did. And for me, do you know what, that was fantastic, because it's nice to, it's, I think it was the only local newspaper we spoke to. And the approach was completely different. And my association with Hayley goes back ten years. So I've got a soft spot for Hayley Hill and I understand the strength of the communities within the town as well. And it was great to see a newspaper reporter also emphasising that point as well. So I was really, I was quite pleased with it. So just to say, I made a little mistake there, there was one reporter that was in C A.
Thank you, Will. Thank you very much, gentlemen. And you're welcome to stay if you wish to.
Sure, all day.
Thanks again.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we did a move on to item 10, Hayley, which is a bike application. Local museum, two thousand nine hundred and ninety five pounds, two thousand nine hundred and ninety five pounds. It's considered commissioning a joint project with every town council, local museum, the first Trail Tale in Suffolk. Right, Johnson, would you like to?
Yeah, thank you. I was pleased to be invited by your town club to join them for discussions with a company called Trail Tale, which basically is produced and, and that's for smartphones, for doing walks in villages and towns. And, I've got it on the screen now for you to have a look at. But basically, as a museum, we want to promote the town, we've always promoted the town. We feel that this is a really good opportunity for us to do that. So hopefully, if we get the grant, we can collaborate with the company to highlight the issues or what we've got in the town. As I put in my report, it's, we do have a fascinating, interesting features in the town and we can reveal its rich historical interest and heritage. I don't know, Colin, can you show the app for people? And I wonder if you can show something about Safford.
Whether you can put it through to Safford.
It's a small, I don't know.
You can send the cookies.
Oh, yeah.
You're not clicking on the Safford Town Walk?
No. No, it is on the other one, I think. So.
I don't like being prepared.
Well, we've been able to do it before, I don't know why it's not doing it quite so much for you. I did actually send out the link, so some people may have actually had a go at it themselves.
I mean, one of the ideas of this also, of the app, is that if you're in a place like Sudbury, for instance, or Safford, and when you're looking and you're doing the tourist ticket, you'll look on your app and say, oh, there's another interesting place in Hayley. Interestingly enough, just after we had that discussion, we had someone come into your museum next door and said he was actually staying in Hayley Hill, using it like a base. And he wanted to know about the silk industry and was interested in short tree mills. And so this is something, if you add the app, you know, highlight that straight away. What I'd like to extend after, if we use this app, I'd like to offer people in the community and visitors tours of the town. There are plenty of places in the town that we could actually do tours of around. And this could highlight some of those places, we could offer those tours, like East Town Hall, for instance, which has got a lot of historical interest.
So as this set up, is it like Q on code?
Yes, well, it's, you have it on your app, you type in the town and it will give you a show, it'll have a map. And several, you can have up to about twenty-five points of interest. If you want more than that, you've got to pay a bit more. We could certainly find twenty-five. And each point of interest you can click on, so you don't have to do the track, you can just pick on an individual point of interest. And it will come up and the museum will provide the information for the person, historical information. You've got pictures on there, you've got historical texts on there. So they can either do the walk, which could take an hour from one end of town to the other, or they can just click on individual points of interest. Still can't get it up.
No, it's a telephone based app.
Is the app location aware? So that as you kind of wander around the town, suddenly something will ping up and say, well, you are now entering Market Hill or what have you.
Um, I don't think it does.
Because I was hoping, if it's very phone based, I would have thought, ooh, GPS is bound to be involved.
That's something we could, it's a discussion with the company, I don't think it does that. And, you know, you'll get, you'll get a trail on the app itself and you can just follow it.
Start anyways.
I mean, it's free, you don't have to pay for the app, so I mean, that's another good thing. So anybody who's, it is free.
I suppose.
Mr. Shane, can't get it on there. I'll put the link in the graphic request, so.
Hi, I'd like to contact, I'm a bit old about funding to counter my spending that big cost because I thought that it's understanding that big cost, we should be using that as a part of our savings, but anyway. Presumably this is a.
A paid fee, is it?
Do we know?
No.
One-off, okay.
But there is a one-off fee.
There is a, there's a one-off fee.
There is a one-off fee, but there is an annual fee of one hundred and fifty pounds.
Yeah, this fee is for two years or three years, I think.
I like that bit. The only thing I would say, Ryan, and I've proposed this, because I think it is a bit, my spent that big cost, probably be saving money somewhere, I don't know. Yeah, is make sure with the historical, and I know you were, the historical things are relevant, because some of the previous stuff that's been suggested has been dubious when it comes to historical items in the town and others have been ignored.
Right, you're actually.
And has to do with the non-heritage assets.
So when you say a joint venture, so the joint, we provide, um, unified information?
Well, I was, I was invited to come along to that discussion purely because we've got the knowledge to put on the app itself, if you like, the detail. I mean, we could just go and ask the guy to go around, take a few photographs himself and do his own research, which I believe he does.
That would be normal. But obviously, actually, it's quite pertinent to what Councilor Burns said, is we have, through the local history museum, a huge amount of information and knowledge, so we can make sure that it's relevant and also things that actually have a story attached to them as well. You may go round town to save things and see something that's interesting, but you may miss something that's got a much more interesting story that would actually be more attractive, they would be pleased to hear it, so I think it's a great opportunity.
Just saying, don't be like Wikipedia, yes.
Well, this is why.
Councilor?
Yeah, I think it's a wonderful idea, a hundred percent iron and support it. What I was going to say is, next year is the 250th anniversary of American US independence. Hayley will have a big partnership, I hope, in that, just hopefully we can have some links to the family ward and, you know, the main points around Hayley will have some to do with it. I bumped into an American a few years ago, it's down there Oxford, funnily enough, and I've got chatting. So I come from Hayley Hill. So I've been to Hayley Hill, so, oh, he goes, yeah. He had a distant relation that was, he'd actually came over, you know, whenever they left. But he said, I came over and had a look around, he goes, I couldn't find anything to, you know, link with that. Or he goes, I walked around and there was no signs or anything like that. So, yeah, it's always stuck in my mind.
I mean, that is a shame, but equally, we did have a couple come many months ago, who actually come from Hayley Hill, Massachusetts, and they were so pleased to see the shielders now in the cafe. And they come to visit us and spent a long time with us. But I do take your point, we do need to highlight, we've got a rich heritage in this town, but we don't seem to highlight it.
Yeah, and so next year is the 250th anniversary, so hopefully there'll be a lot of American.
So we've got a proposal, was that the full number, was it? We've got a proposal from Councilor Burns to object for two thousand nine hundred and ninety five pounds. You have second that, Councilor Jones, second that. Does anybody else like to comment on asking questions? Well, I'll put it into the vote then, all those in favour? Yeah?
Thanks.
All right, so we'll turn now to the agenda, which is the county council report. There is a man in court this week.
It's Friday.
This week, and Councilor Stigson will be sent a brief summary of the recent figures. Anything else, anything about, so that's all, or should we wait until after the meeting?
Yeah, just a quick one. Yeah, thanks again, Alan, for Clayton or the information, it's just as bad as it said it'd be. Yeah, so I was looking at earlier on around outcomes around, you know, cardiac arrests. And every minute that the county council is late, it's actually, the outcome is hugely, you know, bad. So when we've got, you know, largely doubled the amount of time, there's certainly happens to come. Undoubtedly, there's been some bad outcomes in Hayley, unfortunately, yeah. So what we can do to try and, you know, get on top of this, it's fantastic, yeah. So and I really appreciate Councilor Mason's efforts in bringing this up, but I appreciate it. Thanks for that assistance, really appreciate it.
Thank you, so we'll see what the outcome of the meeting requires and hopefully we'll come to a headway. Five C then, is the county council report, thanks again for Councilor Mason for sending that, you're a thorough report. Is there anything you need to add to your?
Just three short points. Firstly, the cross scrutiny meeting, I'll raise a question, that is in January. I've already spoken with the chair and so she's expecting to ask a question. Thank you to Councilors Stigson and Councilor Brown, who have responded to my request for the information so that I can represent the town council as well as you would like me to. In terms of representation, I'd also welcome any written comments about ridiculous recycling limited. That is coming up for development and regulation regarding their, their use of their business. And, you know, I will be speaking, I'll probably recuse myself from that committee and speak on behalf of the rest of the town council on that. And there was. I forgot what it was now. No, I'll stop there, my report is a matter of private record, if anyone's got any questions, have a chance.
Okay. I'm assuming you were caught into an email recently from today about the parking on the bypass. Getting a good chance to see that at all, there's some residents complaining about overnight parking. It's on the highway, I'm assuming it's a highway thing. The environmental thing would be worth a second, but.
Yes, I did say it, thank you. It's something I pursued at great length for the last, last three or four years. There are two aspects to it. One is a limited amount of hobby parking spaces. Now, that one is meant to be temporary parking, it's not meant to be overnight parking. And so there's also an issue of enforcement. It's one of these things I cannot order myself as a councillor, but I have forwarded it on to highways and also West Suffolk council, just to see if there is any support we can give that person. It will say thawed in one and it's longstanding and not all solutions are easy to find.
So enforcement, and who is there responsible?
Well, it would be parking enforcement.
Yeah, thank you. Talked to you. Anybody else have any questions for Councilor Mason's report? Thank you very much. Five D then, district council, any district councils something to be put? I had a, I just meet with the county and partners of Hayley Hill in public role. There is some interesting plans, hopefully, going on there. It's been held up a bit with various, should we say manpower, lack of manpower. But there is agreement of funding from the Football Federation and others to sort of build some new changing rooms. The ones, current ones are probably the worst ones in the district, so that'll be good thing. I can't really say too much at the moment because it's, yeah, the details are a bit sparse, but hopefully it will be something worthwhile. Again, thank you very much. Item five B, town council's match report, that's Councilor Burns's report, maybe you're asking for that? Town council's. Any questions for our events? Thank you very much. Five, if there is members of public to welcome to main stage, so the questions are this time. Mr. Daniel, anything you want to say?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Item six is the mayor's report. Perhaps you can send a report through, obviously he's not here to answer any questions, he's sitting quite, he's getting about quite a bit. Nice picture as well. That's him here. Councilor Jones, do you have anything else? Very much. Item seven, is the one over partnership, seven A's report from the.
Chair, so a couple of people have been together. The one over partnership had a board meeting remotely split over two days. The first session was a presentation by the chief executive of the county council, Nick LaBeach, who presented the proposal for one Suffolk, for a local government organisation, and answered questions from the board on that. And then the following week, the chief executive of West Suffolk, Ian Gallin, gave a, the same basic briefing, but about the Suffolk. Gallin, gave a, the same basic briefing, but about the Suffolk and Paver Three proposal for three unitaries in Suffolk, um, so the board have had the opportunity to hear directly from horse's mouth, so to speak, officers are therefore without the political spin on it, mostly.
Councillor Brown?
Yeah, well, we as a town councillor would respond to consultation. Actually, that's a really, really good question, I'm pleased to raise that, um, there is an opportunity to, to respond to the consultation, uh, and I've been in meetings where there's been discussions about, um, whether, as you know, you don't get to vote on the thing, but you do get to the consultation response in, um, people, any consultancy is, um, free if they wish to express an opinion, um, on which is the preference, or it might be, given that it doesn't, it's either, it's a matter of scale rather than a matter of counting the number of councils, we'll have one unitary authority, whether it's a western one or a one Suffolk one, it's generally one, it needs to be as good as possible, whichever one is there, it needs to work, so it's whether or not people feel that the, a consultation response that is apolitical, um, and doesn't take sides, just highlights the things that are important as far as councillors are concerned for the town of Hayville, and, or whether you want to take sides, I mean, the difficulty, um, is that it's, you know, in terms of balance, I'm not sure how that would quite work to be fair, but that's down to individual members to make a decision, it was useful actually, on the back of all councillor Brown said, for, to get some guidance on what would be useful.
So, I'm sorry, I'm close, Councillor Burns?
Now, I think, I think very often, of course, it's one person, one vote, as I understand, not that we have one person, one, you know, a council put in something, it's got to have no, in theory, it should have no more weight than someone else putting something in, in theory, but we know what governments are like, uh, just while you're on that, and we have the presentation documents out.
With the presentation documents, I'm not sure, we've slipped off the, we've sent them off, the, the note, the notes.
You've got the notes, but the, you know, Martin Galick, who was, he was going to send us those slides.
I think Nick LaBeach has sent hers through, I'm not sure I've seen.
I've done, I've done the drafts, so we're just ready to check.
I haven't seen the slides.
No, we didn't receive the slides from either.
Did we chase them up from here, particularly?
Either, if they were all, and we said this was.
I'll read them, you'll trace them. The last one anyway, I think I have the first one. Okay. See then, is the?
Sorry, what's the answer to that?
I'm sorry, um, I think you, you asked for, did you, did you want to hear my answer? When's the, uh, consultation, obviously?
I mean, we can, we can just, we can leave it with councillors to have a favorable discussion and come back at a future meeting, there's plenty of time to respond to, anyone offer handover the consultation clauses, I can't change this.
January something, January something.
So I don't think it's, it doesn't reach the January for council meeting, does it? Depending whether you want to have this as a Christmas discussion or not.
Okay, so what do we want to do then, so councillor James? So, I'm not using this sort of.
And so I do think that we should, um, give a response as a council, because although, whether or not they should, I feel like, you know, they do tend to listen more to councillors than individuals, and I, I, I think there's kind of two ways to do it, I mean, we could either just discuss it and sort of vote on if we want to go for one side or another, or what, as Colin said, if we wanted to do it more focused on this is what we think is important for the town, what we could potentially do is all sort of, um, say like, and this is just a suggestion, just an example, but each of us could kind of say, like, three things that we think are important, and sort of send them to Colin, so that might be making work for you, Colin, but we could sort of, you know, so that, so that we all get to sort of say which things we think are the most important, I don't know, just a suggestion.
So, the presentation's going to be on Hayville, members of the local council, so...
But it would be the same presentation, maybe they were, they were giving the same presentation to any...
Sort of, and the round person.
As I understand, it hasn't been decided yet, could we actually put in a response of actually we don't agree with the unitary council going for?
Well, you could, but, you know, we're with that.
But to be fair, that's how I feel, I think it's a huge attack on democracy, local democracy, and I think the whole thing, if it's one or three, it's not going to be a good thing for residents, yeah.
But at the moment, that's not on the table, is it?
Well, to be fair, it hasn't been decided yet, so potentially we could say that we don't think for our residents, you know, unitary council is the best way forward, it's a democracy.
That's, that's one, do you?
Yeah, one, yeah.
Councillor Mason?
My preference would be that we wouldn't get into the debate over the pros and cons of the One Suffolk or the Three Unitary Model, uh, but I, I like the idea of the things that matter to us in Hayville, and the things that concern us and, uh, are, will impact residents, you know, and, and I think if we were to put that footpost forward, as councillor Miller Jones said, I, I think it would be a more harmonious discussion before Christmas for me, if we've got into the pros and cons of the different models.
Councillor James, the post, so I think it's generally, you see?
He said, what it draws at the end of the month, you know?
Councillor Mason, don't have a?
Yeah, just, I was just thinking, couldn't we put something like the, um, the good points for Hayville on, on this sort of, um, if we do decide to say, you know, what the good points can be and what the bad points can be for Hayville, on, on this consultation? Because it's, it, see, the thing is, it's, obviously the government's made its mind up, you know, they, they said that there's going to be, it's going to be, um, the organisation, whatever happens, um, it's just that, obviously, with both councillors, one or three forward, could it be two, you know, because at the end of the day, it's the, um, the minister that's going to decide, um, what's going to happen, but, but couldn't we sort of just, in our consultation, say what the good points would be and what the bad, bad points would be, without discussion, really, it's, it's a discussion I think we, we don't want, because we're getting all sorts of arguments.
So what you say, we don't really want to be comparing one against the other, we just want to say what we've got to say now?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's councillor Mason.
Yeah, yeah. I think what I'm saying, councillor Miller Jones has.
So it's, it's facting of, we have good points and bad points, and that's it.
So Colin?
Yeah, I'll draw something together.
Yeah, so?
People want to sort of... People have it.
I'm saying, some, uh, some of their ideas, yeah, ask them.
Yeah, he said, whatever happens, in the dice, central government make decision, doesn't matter what we have, we discuss what we have, or whether we want to do, it stands where we came years ago, it's the same thing, they don't make decision, and that's it, we don't know, so.
Yeah, it's always good to have a meeting, isn't it?
So I was there, opinion was a lot my life.
It's one of my favorite. Tell you the what? Generally, yeah. Okay, thank you, that's, um, waiting to move forward, thank you very much. We'll be up, um, seven C.
Yeah, I think I've already covered that, the matters of rising to this.
Yeah. A then, financial matters, A is to authorize payments, this, so councillor Burns, voted, take that, councillor Mason, votes in favour, that's Karen, thank you very much. Seven B is to vote the council insurance has been reviewed by the RFO and placed with ISCOs like others, insurance brokers of the town council, stock play remains, centre remains with DOA through David J Miller, insurance brokers, so that's just a small blessing, you're not going to have that.
Um, I think the only thing that, um, is unfortunate is that the, uh, the last minute was from us, the Community Trust Insurance, um, was apparently, um, discounted like a multi-car policy for organisations, um, well, the town council, uh, has disaggregated from the Community Trust, and the town council, um, insurance cost hasn't changed really much at all, it's literally within a few hundred pounds of what it was when the two were together, and the Community Trust has doubled, um, so, I did talk to some other companies, but I did get a fortnight's notice that that was going to happen, and I did get one quote through, which was better, which is promising, um, but, um, it was, it arrived on Friday, which was literally, sorry, arrived on Wednesday, and Friday was the date of the renewal, um, and there were challenges over whether or not they fully understood the Community Trust, um, and it just simply wasn't time to go back and forward and ensure with confidence, I need to get to come to you and say, I'm confident that I have properly insured the running of the organisation, and I wasn't in a position to do that, um, it hurt, but I had to go with the, um, company that does know our business, because it's what we've been insured for years.
Is there a, a call in off here, anything like that, or are you going to make a refund?
Um, yeah, we can, we can look for alternative insurance, I mean, you, you pay pro rata for the insurance, so, um, unfortunately, what it means is you won't have a terrible line before you won't save any money, but, um, it is a supportive, yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yeah, um, our business insurers do exactly the same thing, sort of, you know, chasing and chasing, feeling like they need it by the last moment, and I think they do on purpose so that you haven't got a chance. So, um, what I tend to do now is try and look around about three months beforehand, just so that it's fully, you know, because I've been called myself, so, just maybe it's something worthwhile, thinking.
That's a great topic, isn't it?
Well, I mean, to be fair, we start in September, uh, and, uh, but they won't be right, they won't quote in September, they leave it and they do it, and I had absolutely no reason, having just managed to get the insurance, the choices back together with the same broker, um, I, the last thing I wanted to do was have to break it apart again, but it looks like I have to.
And it is a nightmare to do as well as swap your business or something like that, you know, you just don't have the...
No, actually, the concern always is, is that, once you've been with insurance company for five, six, seven years, then they can't really say they don't understand your business, um, but a brand new one, you can change, you can tell we didn't have that bad.
Yeah, it's a nightmare.
Right, but that was just proposing anyway, so, and, uh, eight C then, is to consider adopting the RFO's working documents as the first draft budget for twenty twenty-seven.
Yes, I don't know, uh, councillors, if they've got any questions or anything in terms of the, um, the budget or the Excel versions, I can go into more detail, but it's up to, there's a bit for you to see it, um, but I'll, I'll talk to the, uh, yes. Um, so, I think the headlines, um, key thing which has been really, really useful is that the Suffolk Local Government and the City, um, I think, um, some feedback councillor Mason might want to take back, is, is I'm really pleased that the, um, management of that pension fund, um, has been really, really strong, and it's fully funded, and they're able to reduce the amount that the, um, employer contribute, interesting, I didn't know, because I was, I was, I was in a seminar, a webinar, I was going to ask the question, well, how about, uh, the employees' pay less, but actually, the employees' rate for their pension scheme is set in law, that can't change, um, so it's only the employers' one that changes, so the parish council share is going down from twenty percent to seventeen percent, a few years ago it was twenty-three percent, we had to contribute each year, um, so you imagine coming down seventy percent, it's a huge amount, and that's down to the fact that the county council have done a good job with the people they've got managing the money, so, um, very pleased to see that, makes a big difference, it's, it's really managed to, um, absorb a lot of the other inflection costs, um, training has helped enormously, um, personnel committee, uh, agreed to enter to do training contract on that, um, insurances I've just spoken about, um, um, yeah, I think it is an up and down story with the art centre, I've looked into this business of the marketing costs, et cetera, and, um, uh, they're doing more, and I know that there's a lot of costs associated with extra activity have gone up, uh, and I'm going to have a meeting, um, with Dan and others, just to look at, making sure that the, um, the, the finances are a framework within which they're working, rather than just a historical record of what they spend, um, uh, yes, we have several more tickets, but we want to make sure that we don't end up spending a hundred pounds on marketing and probably getting fifty pounds worth of extra tickets sold, so I just want to make sure that that is working the right way around, and bar sales, unexpectedly down, I mean, I know that's a cost of living, I think that people are coming out, they're going, they're, they're being able to afford the tickets, but the, the actual bits around the outside, um, seem to be dropping, we're seeing it at the zone in terms of use of the cafe, and seems to be seeing it here in the use of the bar, um, the coffee bar, which isn't associated with the shows, uh, it's usually closed by the time the show's on, um, that's doing fine, so it does kind of support the idea that people are not spending as much, and I don't know whether restaurants in Hayville are finding that they're spending a lot of money.
Councillor Brown?
Yeah, as I say, uh, thanks, um, yeah, we've got to try and make every penny count and, you know, people are out there, they're sort of really struggling, businesses are struggling, it's not, not good, and food prices have gone up, you know, I was reading somewhere the other day that even, uh, food banks, they're struggling to keep up across the country now, um, you know, they've got, they've got so much demand, so, um, yeah, from our perspective, I just think that we just really need to, you know, we do wonderful stuff, and I know we make every penny count, but, you know, we're on some of it, you know, definitely, yeah, right, um, so, going through really, yeah, so what it has meant is that, um, uh, I think this is particularly down to border costs, um, uh, not, you know, pensions coming down, et cetera, we have very slightly been able to reduce the amount of, um, expenditure on the, um, the money, the money is going to subsidise what we do, so the Art Centre subsidies is less in the next financial year to run than before, so that's good, and it's all part of the bigger picture, and income deficit support, uh, is coming down as well, but that's probably more about actually reduced activity rather than necessarily greater profitability.
So, on the, the preset, as it stands at the moment, um, uh, this is all errors and omissions accepted, uh, it is, this is the pre draft, um, and if it's going in the right direction, we may want to adopt it as a draft, but it's looking like we might be able to keep below three percent, at the moment, two and a half percent, um, is the figure we have, um, for the preset for next year, but that's a really early version, P seven, um, you know, that's hardly, hardly half a year worth of data to base next year on. So...
Councillor Burns?
Colin, thank you, um, as usual, I'm pretty down, I'm going to shoot two right fast this time.
I decided to make it bigger for you.
Bit bigger, slightly bigger, yeah. Um, right, um, do you, um, I think I asked it last year, do you actually ask the comments for their estimate, or do you just base it on?
So we base it on the actuals, and then I have discussions with people like Dan, et cetera, on what he wants, what he needs.
Some tech ones, and some, some stuff.
Yeah, but if...
I have to come from the service, I'm just, I'm just making that. Um, number, sorry, I'm a stick, I'm a big number five, but a six. Increase further to reflect on telephone. Um, every month I pay invoices, where I notice staff have these gift card phones for ten dollars. Ten dollars? Ten pounds, ten pounds a month. But one of them starts off on fifty and I don't understand that. I mean, I know it's only five quid a month, but it's still sixty quid a year.
Was it gift card contracts?
It's remember the snow stuff.
Of the lot stuff?
Snow stuff. Uh, well, uh, uh, cabin stuff.
Cabin stuff.
Yeah, I know it's only five, five quid a month, but it just seems.
I want them to got an extra bit.
No, but.
Which one is it, cabin?
No, it's Rebecca.
Don't wash it out.
It's still sixty quid a year.
Yes, it should be the same.
That's fine, interesting what you said about the marketing costs. I mentioned about the bar and coffee bar, now I, it's interesting because you, you said bar income is down. Um, I guess that's year on year.
Yeah.
Um, but of course we have had quite a lot of expenditure with these multi-show in the field, so our staff costs have gone up. Income has been virtually non-existent. But you said coffee bar costs are stable, which I, I don't like that word, cost of sales, but it makes me happy, but it's actually costing. But anyway, sales income, of course, we had a quite massive price increase in September last year, which I think affected things, because you look at the numbers, the number of people, it's not gone up that much, but the income has. That might be the reason. Because forty thousand, like it would be obvious. Um, events, I saw that. Um, splash pad, uh, yeah, obviously we've been doing our cleaning. Uh, hopefully we won't have the repairs, yeah, which we had to have last, uh, this time. And I'm also waiting for the pump, which we took out in May to be mega tested, because it may not be anything wrong with it, so it may be a risk. Um, tax base, well, we spoke about that already, so that's very disgusting. Um, a couple of minor things. Uh, we, in, uh, in your, um, spreadsheet, you've got V E V J K, you've got three thousand pounds allocated. Councillor.
All right, okay.
You all right?
I'll check and see what the, it's, what we do, we put in every year, we put in a extra bit of funds because there's hugely some event.
I'm just trying to think of something that happened.
I expect someone will go, that's a good one.
Maybe just throw up a, a tea bag in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-six, it's bad, yeah, it was bad for the science.
Yeah, so I just, yeah, I'm just naming it, it's a name you see. Um, especially Alan Kirsty, for that, ten, I don't know where it looks. Uh, it's all roses and Christmas tree. I see we've got, we've got Christmas tree back from Birmingham this year.
Um, Staffordshire.
Staffordshire, I knew it was up that way, so.
Yeah, um.
Have we, have we re-looked at Albertor or places like that?
Albert is so expensive.
Okay, but we do actively look.
We always look every year.
Yeah, that's fine, different clothes. No, but thank you for that because, um.
I have to go and say that quality and true.
Lovely trees.
Lovely trees.
Lovely trees.
Have you counted a string of those?
Uh, about nineteen years.
Yeah, it wouldn't put it fast.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I thought it was actually the person taking the string off, which was the best person. But it'd be done, it's the top.
Don't put it on your pump, don't make a test into your chest, some of those electronic protection, isn't it?
No, yeah, that's good, I'm not doing that, obviously.
I'm just saying, be careful, there's some. I'm saying you can't do it.
So, sorry, um, right, let's go quickly. If it stays at two and a half percent, then that's pretty good.
Do I have a question? Just bang on, I know, just, we've got, no, balance table, I mean, those good events, um, I was a bit disappointed to come out after the end of the bars closed. Is there any possibility, you know, is there any mileage in leno's that people may want to drink afterwards? Or was it, I guess it's actually the staff, was it?
The staff has to stay there for the hour whilst you're still sat in the auditorium waiting for you to come back out. So, uh, there's already a cost by the time you arrive. Um, I think historically, most people just dive straight out and leave. Um, I mean, if you, if, if there's, I guess we could ask, ask the audience and see whether or not they, uh, they would, they would stay.
I suggest something, I mean, I've been going about this for ages, is we don't tell the audience there's a bar open, and it's about sixty to seventy percent of people, uh, just staying or destroying, don't go out. Um, like some of them.
Yeah, a lot of people's, it's difficult to get in and out sometimes.
No, I agree.
Fifteen minutes.
I agree, we put it on twenty minutes, yeah, I mean, I think it's worthwhile, we go through any announcements? It's, you know, if it gives a bath or something, just say, oh, we'll be back in twenty minutes. Oh, by the way, bars open, da, 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 da. Councillor.
I would agree with that, I don't think it's obvious, the way the building is set out, it's just not obvious that there's a bar there. It's like in, in a lot of venues, when you go there, you see the bar before you go in and people just know, but I felt I was quite hidden.
Definitely.
But yeah, so I would completely agree with that, I think we might as well let people know because.
We'll show the announcements.
Uh, Councillor.
And it works because I was on the microphone during the interval for Lisa's dance floor performance and the auditorium pretty much empties towards the bar, so it is definitely worth doing.
That's all yours. Councillor.
Sorry, how much was the bar taken last year?
Last year?
Yeah, beautiful.
Uh, okay. Um, do you want to answer right now?
No, it's a rough call point to you.
Uh, well, I can tell you what we, relatively straightforward what we've been doing. It's always, but I don't know whether this is going to be, um. The trouble is because we changed accounts, the new, the new one doesn't have last year's on it. Um, so. Last, and, uh, so.
Just where sales are.
Uh, 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 have you got my spreadsheet?
I think it's true, do you want to do your spreadsheet?
Yeah, yeah, on Monday. Um, Sunday, Sunday. Um. Oh, have, have we had the financial team or someone that have both on there? Yeah. Uh, so. Yeah, so. Twenty twenty-four was, um, sixty thousand.
What three years?
We're a month seven. Uh. No, a month seven.
A month seven, last November.
Yeah, but your figures to, um, uh, to the end of month seven. So we're halfway, no, period is seven in the financial field. Um, so last year, all twelve months, we did sixty thousand nine hundred. We're just about half that, but we're a month further ahead. Now, what I couldn't tell you is what the budget profile is, so if I did a quick, if I just change that figure to, um. I am, I am, this is how I'm getting my budget. Yeah, so we're about fourteen hundred pounds behind where we were.
I wouldn't mind having from your bank.
A bar, we've enjoyed having you there.
I mean, twenty, you tried.
I've read it, the bar type, you're on the right, eight thousand pounds, I've read it, so I have a fact here. But it's on the change, because people have changed now, yeah. So that's it, mate.
So we're assuming adopting these figures, uh, first draft, not far from there. So I'll create a proposal to drop those in the stands, so Councillor Jones, second, Councillor Burns. All those in favour? That's agreed, thank you very much.
Chair, I also, you had an email, asked if possibly you could have some assistance from a couple of councillors or more. Um, you might be interested in looking at the, um, the, the figures for me, it was very useful last year, so remember. There's people spotting staff, so that was useful.
Does anyone want to point it? Councillor Share, what's, am I in the hat? Am I in the hat? Is that the right question? Councillor Burns?
Thank you again, I'm Larry.
Yeah, so we've got two names there, and, and names do you need?
Oh, well, I mean, to sort of say, all the merit, without the completely over the top, but, um, if, if, if two, so two is almost sufficient, that's great, but.
No. So we've got two, then, yeah, two volunteers, what do you want to use?
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, I'll, I'll send you the.
Yeah. Right. Uh, point B then is to review the grant policy, which is what we discussed previously, isn't it?
Yes, so the, the leisure committee chair, um, uh, had a look at this uh, and was picking up on some of the points made by four councillors about the, um, uh, some of the grants requests. So I've tried to capture that in some wording, which we're agreeing, if we have a chance to read it beforehand. Um. So there was a request that if they can ask for general revenue funding, um, that they provide an explanation of how the organisation is going to be sustainable.
Yeah.
And just reminded, and I think the, um, uh, the fruit food behaviour was an example where they were asking for for X amount of funds for revenue, to release X amount of funds to buy some capital stuff, but the councillors might quite be there much rather than we reverse that and ask you to fund the capital stuff that kept the revenue they were getting in from donations for the rent. And so it's that one. Uh, then there was a request that council officers screen it, uh, screen all the applications. Um, uh, and then we will let you know our reasons for rejecting the application.
She's one.
So the actual application form itself, um, there was a discussion about making it electronic, so I haven't gone completely crazy spending a lot of time on, on this. Um, what I did change was, um, some of the structure around the, around this part, which I think we should have done, um, is just getting it so that there's a total expenditure there and total income there, because the total income was missing. Um, to hopefully make it a bit easier, um, so that people complete the form properly. And I've updated, thank you councillor Burns, I've updated references to data protection to the, um, latest act.
Now, so yeah, that's, uh, second part, I think that just reflects what they do for the communi-.
Prime communities.
That's it, private communities, okay.
Okay, um, councillor Smith.
If you scroll down a little bit, in one point two, same one point two, uh, there is a typo, I think.
Is there?
Where it says all or of some, I think you mean all or or some of its inhabitants. Or all or some of its inhabitants, but we've got of some, all of some.
I, I, I think that was right, I don't agree with that, because it said or any part of it, or.
Or or some.
Or some of it.
Yeah, that's not really bad. It's in the forehand, councillor, interesting, thank you. Thank you, it took us five years to notice that.
We do. Okay, so are we going to, um, refer to the document? It just says a review.
Uh, yes, you need to, need to agree the changes.
So we've got a proposal then, Councillor Burns, so Councillor Jones is second, all those in favour? That's agreed, thank you. Lovely, thank you, um. One, item nine is costation proposed changes to the West Suffolk Local Council Tax Act, just here in twenty sixteen, seventeen. And your proposal for a draft response to the consultations will be, uh, forward on to you. Councillor Burns?
I, I thought the draft, it was hard hitting enough that, you know, why should we basically subsidise anybody else in the, in the district? Which is, you know, eighty, I would say eighty something houses, you know, there've been many more houses in that building this, in the town since the last twelve months. And we're paying for it but not getting anything.
You're talking about the tax police department?
The tax, uh, yeah, but this, um.
You're, you're in the number in the house, aren't you?
It's all related to, uh, the fact that it's a hundred percent relief. Don't have a problem with the principle, but as it says, as a comment, quite when you say it's a practice, we end up, you know, paying up more than I should.
Councillor Smith.
I thought it was excellent.
Um, I did, I have a, the, before I saw this session, actually, and it's pretty much reflects what I'd said, uh, anyway, so I hope this, uh, too. Yeah, so she's not unaware of the situation, she'll be told, and, uh, when she spoke to me, she said she agreed to look at it. Obviously, she couldn't get prices, which is a lot, but to have this, uh, advising can be good. So you're opposed, Councillor Jones, second, Councillor Page, all those in favour? That's carried, very much. One, one, ten B now, is the grant application for Happy Croft Leisure, so the grant for four thousand pounds at twenty-eight pence. Of course, the, the back Christmas, they explore outdoors, two half-term programmes. Family park cooking and adventure days, um. Got any comments, Councillor Burns?
Yeah, sorry, I have some doubt, you've not had a report, have you, for the October report? How's the half term?
Chair, this was the, um, this was, uh, uh, some of it was paid and then councillors asked for it to be deferred and asked that, uh, um, Happy Croft Leisure go away and try and find some funding from somewhere else. Which actually is exactly what they've done and therefore they've reduced this ask. Um, uh, I don't, yeah, I don't think I have seen that.
No, I would like to have seen October's figures, were mine.
But you say we have, um, basically what we're asking to do, uh, do you know? I've asked, so I must admit, I'm thinking, yeah, pet, pet rotation, how much did they?
It was about, I think this has come down by about three thousand.
About two or three thousand.
Really, any, any, any more comments at all? Or any proposals from anybody? Any proposal that we can pull in now? Councillor Brown, sent to by Councillor Page. Uh, all those in favour? That's carried, very much. Item eleven, adoption of committee defaults, eleven A is a leisure, so there's an adopted minutes of the meeting held on the length of no valuations to invite, and any recommendations contained therein? Councillor Burns, seconded by Councillor Tashere, all those in favour? Carrie, eleven B, against the planning committee to adopt the uh, minutes of meeting held on the seventeenth, November, two twenty-five, any recommendations? Councillor Hamlet, proposal, Councillor Sec-, uh, Martin Secondes, all those in favour? That's carried, thank you very much. And then also item twelve, which is the date of the next meeting, uh, Monday, fifteen, December, twenty twenty-five. So thank you very much. Going back to the meeting to.
Councillor Smith.
So. Item thirteen here is, uh, special press and public to resolve under the public bodies of the 1960s, the public and residents of the press and all past media, please be advised from meeting due consideration of the following items of business as publicity would be petitioned to the public interest due to the confidential nature of the business to be transacted, approval of council plans to be published in due course. So a proposal, please.